Okay, good evening. I will call this meeting to order 6:32. Good evening to everybody. City Clerk Duarte, would you please take role?
Yes, Mayor, before I take role, I would like to inform members of the audience that Councilmembers Alvarez, Ashton and Trujillo are participating in this meeting via teleconference. Councilmember Alvarez?
Present.
Councilmember Ashton?
Present.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Present.
Mayor Protem Pacheco?
Present.
And Mayor Frometta?
Present.
I would like now to call on Pastor Jason Neville. He's the lead pastor for Praise Chapel Downey to lead us in the invocation of tonight's council meeting. Pastor Jason?
Thank you. Thank you. What an honor it is to be asked to do this. Thank you, Mayor Claudia, and an honor to open us up in a word of prayer. This great city I've lived in since the age of three years old. Let me pray.
Can we stand up first? Thank you.
Heavenly Father, Lord God, we just come before you this evening, and we just want to first take time to just thank you for the breath in our lungs and for the opportunity we have to come together and labor for this great city of ours, the city of Downey. I'd like to lift up, Lord God, our Mayor Claudia and all those that serve our council, all those that are in leadership, Lord God, that we know that you have put in governing areas, Lord God, and so we like to pray for them for strength. I like to pray for guidance. I like to pray for direction, Lord God, godly direction for our city moving forward. Father, Lord God, we like to pray for our police department and those in our fire department and those that are city officials all throughout our city. And we'd like to just ask that you would just have your way in this time, this gathering, this communication, this meeting, Lord God, that you would be present in everything that is said and done, for we are quick to give you all the glory, honor, and praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. We really appreciate you joining us tonight via Zoom. Thank you. Blessings to you and your congregation.
Thank you.
I would like now to ask our Madam Mayor Protem Pacheco if you would please lead us in the flag salute.
Yes. Can we please face a flag? If you're watching us virtually, any flag, please place your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. At this time, I would like to make a couple of presentations. I know we have someone already here to receive an award, and I would like to call in Mr. Hector Soza.
Where Natalie's at? Hola.
In honorable in our community. My mask. Thank you, Hector.
Thank you, Mayor Frometta, for this lovely award. This is really nice. I appreciate it. Thank you, City Council, City leadership. As Mayor Frometta mentioned, they grew up in Downey. It's a pleasure to receive this award. It's a pleasure to serve in our community. It's a very rewarding experience. I just started out as a volunteer coach in DJA when my son was in kindergarten. I was dragging him out of bed at five years old to go play flag football, and that's how it started. It just ended up developing a very nice winning team there. And, you know, I got to tell you, I just learned over the years how much of an impact we can have in volunteering our time, especially with our youth. And I can tell you, my time with DJA, West Downey Little League, Calvary Chapel, Downey Pioneer Clubs, Kiwanis, my short stint as a English literacy tutor for adults at Downey City Library have all been very rewarding. They've all led up to me taking the reins as president for Gangs Out of Downey, which I believe is a very, very vital organization in our community. We're doing a lot of good work, and I'm looking forward to a lot of big things that we're going to be doing in this clinical time. I can tell you right now, coming off a challenging year, I think it's very important, my plea to you, to everyone who's watching, is to get involved with our community. There's nothing more rewarding and more satisfying than volunteering your time for your community. And right now, we really need that. A lot of us have been affected by this year, whether it's financially or through the loss of someone, or, you know, maybe we've known someone who's gone through something like that. So right now, it is a critical time for us to come together as a community. And again, it's a very satisfying, rewarding experience. So with that said, God bless and thank you.
We have another award. I don't know if Dr. John Garcia is outside. Not yet. Okay. We will move forward with the next presentation we have. I know he said he was running a little bit behind schedule due to another meeting. Thank you. So, Becky, would you come up?
Madam Eric, can we just take a second here? I think we're having an issue with some audio, so if we can just take a five-minute break here.
Testing, testing. Testing, testing, testing.
Good evening, everyone. For those of you participating in our city council meeting via YouTube livestream, we are having issues with the audio on YouTube livestream, so we'd like to ask you to please join us via Zoom. I am displaying the Zoom meeting ID and passcode at this time. If you can please go to Zoom, enter meeting ID 92998355407, and the passcode is 069452. Once again, meeting ID 92998355407, passcode is 069462. Or you can call one of the toll-free numbers at 1-877-853-5247, or 888-788-0099, and enter the same meeting ID and passcode.
One thing we learned in 2020 as we pivot. We pivot, we adapt, and we adjust. So thank you, everybody, for your patience.
Once again, for those of you that have just joined us on YouTube livestream, we are having issues with the audio. Please join us via Zoom. Meeting ID is 92998355407, passcode is 069452. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for your flexibility. Technology, we have found, is a wonderful thing, and at the same time, it brings a whole new set of challenges. So for those of you joining us via Zoom, and those of you joining us via YouTube that you needed to switch over to Zoom, we've given you a couple of minutes to be able to do that. It appears the sound on YouTube is not coming through. So thank you for being patient, and thank you for helping us continue to pivot and adjust our meeting. These definitely are challenging times. So thank you to our IT team and everybody for helping get us through this. I would like to right now call Dr. John Garcia. Dr. John Garcia has been... How about if you wait right here next to me? Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Garcia. It is my pleasure to speak a little bit about you. May I? Yes. Okay. Okay. Thank you for joining us, by the way. Yes. Yes. Welcome. Welcome. Dr. John Garcia has been Downey Unified Superintendent for nearly eight years. And Dr. Garcia, you grew up in Downey, and you're a product of Downey schools, having attended our Downey schools and graduated from Downey High, so go Vikings. You're the only, the fourth school superintendent that Downey has had, and you're leading. Dr. Garcia is leading a district's 1,000 teachers, an additional 1,700 staff, and you're overseeing the education of about 20,000 students. Is that correct? That's very impressive, Dr. Garcia. You were selected. Dr. Garcia was selected as the Superintendent of the Year for Region 14 of the Association of California School Administrators in 2020. This was a very distinguished honor, as Region 14 consists of 24 school districts covering an area from Beverly Hills to Long Beach. Each year, ACSA acknowledges outstanding performance and achievement by individual administrators in various regions throughout California. It is definitely something that I wanted to recognize you, Dr. Garcia, because not only have you, is the legacy that you are leaving the students and the 20,000 that are under your guidance and direction. Certainly, you have been involved with the Downey Foundation for Educational Opportunities, DFEO, over the last few years since its inception, and as an advisory board member, and this has been a key to the growth of the foundation, where we seek to provide opportunities for every child in the areas of music, art, arts, sports, and college prep workshops. One of the things that is really impressive about Downey and Downey's district is that our graduation rate is 97%, whereas the state's is 84%, and that is phenomenal. When we talk about the unprecedented challenges that we have faced over this last year, and the constant pivoting that we've had to do, it is just amazing what our school district and our teachers and our students have had to do and have had to overcome and continue to overcome. And certainly, it goes without saying that it takes strong, steady leadership to continue to provide that guidance. And I am very proud to be able to name you and provide this award that is the Mayor's Legacy Award to you, because I truly believe you are doing such an exceptional job in our community, guiding us through these very difficult times, and you have a heart of service. You're not just doing your job because you have to do your job, and you're educating our students to be ready for the 21st century and its challenges, but you do it with such care and such compassion and such understanding. And I know that the thousands and thousands of students and families that go through what we've been going through, it's hard and it's difficult. And as leaders, we don't have all the answers. And we seek to do the best, and I just want to say thank you on behalf of the city of Downey. Let me go ahead and read to you. The Mayor's Legacy Award goes to John A. Garcia, Jr. "In recognition of your selfless dedication and always going above and beyond for others, your heartfelt efforts and accomplishments have been of enormous value to our community and have helped to further the common goal of making our city a better place for all. Thank you, Dr. Garcia, for leaving a legacy of service and generosity in our community. Thank you for your leadership." And let me go ahead and put on my mask. Thank you very much.
Well, first and foremost, obviously, I want to thank you, Madam Frometta, and the council, and city member, our city manager, Levis, and quite frankly, the entire city of Downey staff, who work every day to partner and collaborate with us as the school district to provide the best we can for our community. And I'm very, very humbled and honored to receive this award. And you talked a lot about kind of my background and my history and the passion that I bring to this work every single day. And really, so much of that is as a result of being a kid of Downey, of being a... of being a student in our schools, being a member of this community. Had the great pleasure of being on a rotary Zoom call today with Chief Hurlock. Absolutely thrilled that Chief Hurlock is also a product of Downey Unified Schools as well, and knows the community from that lens as well. So, I was very excited to hear him tell his story today. Really, really appreciated that. You know, being up here today in regard to the legacy really stands on some decisions that our Board of Education made, starting in 2013, which first and foremost was to hire me. So, I was very excited about that to begin with, to be able to come home. I'd never worked in Downey before becoming superintendent. And in 2014, the following year, the board set out challenges for us and a vision to provide a 21st century education that made sure every one of our students was college and career-ready, globally competitive, and a citizen of strong character. And we've been living that, and I've been working to try to live up to those ideals that our Board of Education set since then. Last March, we were all thrown a curveball, a huge curveball, something that hasn't happened essentially since 1918 in the United States. And again, Chief Hurlock referenced this again today, and the challenges they're going through with their firefighting force. But I'm so proud of our organization, and it was because of the challenge that the board laid out to us in 2014 that we were able to transition in a matter of a couple of weeks and get thousands of devices into kids' hands. We had talked about being a one-to-one district and moving that way, and it happened literally overnight, and we were able to flip a switch. I'm really, really proud we were able to get devices and hotspots into our students' hands. There were some that we weren't, but we remedied that by the end of the year. And as we started this new year, we had 14,000 new iPads that are Wi-Fi enabled for our TK through 8th grade students. Every one of our high school students had a Chromebook that they could access the internet on and move forward from there. In addition to that, I really, really am proud of our food distribution, our food services. We've served over 1.5 million meals since the middle of March to our students. And not just our students, any child 18 and younger within the district boundary. So, very excited about that. But I also want to take the opportunity to recognize and thank Chief Milligan and his officers, because a lot of those have required us to get support from Downey Police Department, and they've been there every single step of the way. So, Chief, I really appreciate you and your officers and all the work in supporting our food distributions. Can't thank you enough. Thank you very much. Also want to recognize our teachers and our staff. You mentioned our 1,000 teachers and our over 1,700 classified non-teaching employees. They're amazing. Their commitment to our students every single day. Our teachers have faced challenges this year that they never envisioned in their careers. Many of us has, and they've risen to the occasion every single time. And they are working harder than they ever have to provide for our students. Is distance learning the same as in-person learning? Absolutely not. Are our teachers trying to make it that and come as close as they can every day? Absolutely, and we're working hard to get our kids back in schools as soon as we can safely do so. But I have to recognize our teachers and our classified staff for really, really working hard every day to do the best that they can. I also want to thank our associations. We have a teachers' association, our employee association's working with us every step of the way. It's been absolutely amazing. And lastly, but certainly not least, our parents and our students have been incredible. And Mayor Formetta, you're one of those parents in working with the challenges associated. But I can't tell you that our parental support and our student engagement, while there are challenges involved, our parents and students continue to work hard every single day to make the best of this not-great situation. Before I sign off with just a couple of things, I also want to recognize and thank city manager Levis and his staff here, because we're currently working on a partnership and collaboration with PIH Downey, in which we can find a way to deliver vaccines to our staff and to our communities here in our own environment, instead of having them go to the County Office of Education, trying to make that happen in collaboration with the city and PIH. So, Gilbert, thank you so much for your partnership in that. Really excited. I'm hoping we can make that come to fruition and really accelerate it for our staffs and our community and have our own vaccination here in Downey in our partnership with PIH and the city. So, as we continue to look to live up to the ideals, I want to assure the city of a couple of things. In your logo, in the City of Downey logo, there are three pillars: community, public services, and schools. And I want to assure you that our Board of Education challenges us every day as staff to do everything we can to live up to that pillar that the city took and thought enough of our schools to value to make it one of the three pillars of this outstanding community in the schools, and we're working hard to live up to that every single day. There are challenges associated with that, but we will emerge from this with some things that we didn't have before. We're going to emerge with new 21st century facilities at all four of our middle schools, in which every one of our kids matriculates through. We're going to emerge in a one-to-one environment in which our teachers know how to effectively integrate technology moving forward. And lastly, we are going to emerge with a level of, and I love that you used these words earlier, Mayor Formetta, grace, patience, and flexibility with each other, with ourselves, with so many things, and a new appreciation for what we do in this community every single day when we come out the other side of this. I can't thank you enough again, and I'm humbled by this award, and I truly appreciate it. Thank you very much, and thank you to city manager Levis and your staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, it looks like we're going to move on to our next presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for having me today. I visit our council meetings about every two months or so to do these regular COVID-19 response updates, and so I'm here today again. Thank you. My name is Rakdi Cloak. I am the city's emergency preparedness program manager, and I will provide an update of our city's response to COVID-19 since November 10. As usual, I'll share the timeline since then, talk about the current stats, what is Downey doing to respond to it, and what is the current health order now? As you know, the health order changes almost daily. And so, I will just kind of give a quick overview. I won't touch on every single thing. I just want to highlight a few things here. We saw in November, the county did start to tighten up restrictions. We saw that they were allowing outdoor gatherings with less than 15 people, but no more than three households. I want to point this out, because as of just yesterday, we are now back to about that. But saying that, I still would like to go ahead and share with you what did happen in November and December. Later on, in November, the county continued to become more strict, where it required that all gatherings of members outside the house were to cease between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 5:00 a.m., and that restaurants were to only do pickup or delivery. Early December, the county did launch their Keep LA County Dining Grant Program to help local restaurants. And we did see the county launch its COVID-19 home test collections for those who were unable to do testing at the sites. The state did launch California Notify. This was an app to help with contact tracing. In December, the city, City of Downey, did also complete its final rounds of CARES Act reporting. I'll provide a little bit more details about that as well in the later slides. In December, as you know, the number of COVID cases increased exponentially, and so we also saw a lot of restrictions. The county did revise its temporary targeted safer-at-home health order. We saw playgrounds remain open. However, personal care services began to close. Grocery stores had a maximum capacity of 35. Temporary outdoor seating is closed as well. Mid-December, we saw the county begin vaccinations. Late December, the county did extend the temporary target Safer-at-Home Health Order to align with the state's regional stay-at-home order for indefinitely until just recently. I wanted to mention that in January, the county did continue to provide a lot of outreach to ensure that people had information about COVID-19 through their community health worker outreach initiatives. And then, we also, here in the City of Downey, we did extend our ordinance to establish a temporary moratorium on evictions of commercial tenants impacted by COVID-19. I know I don't have it here, and that's because it's been recently updated. But as you all may know already, and I alluded to, the health order has been updated. We're back to November 15th health order, which means, and I will kind of go through those right now really quickly, private gatherings limited to three households and a total of 15 persons total. Family entertainment centers are open at 50% capacity. Again, those are only for outdoor operations. Museums, zoos, and aquariums can operate outdoors. Personal care facilities can open indoors with 25% capacity. Fitness center facilities are open for outdoor operations. Indoor malls are 25% for indoor capacity. Restaurants, wineries, and breweries are still currently only takeout-only. However, starting on the 29th, we will see that change, and we may start seeing some outdoor dinings again. Currently, what are the stats looking like? Oops. So, I see here we're well over our, unfortunately, the number of confirmed cases since the pandemic has started is well over a million. I wanted to share some things, though. This is actually, since the last presentation I provided back in November, it has tripled since then, meaning in less than three months, we've tripled versus nine months. So, it's very interesting, the development. Where in terms of the number of deaths, unfortunately, what we have seen in these less than three months is doubled. That type of rate also reflects here in Downey as well. We've seen a three-times increase in terms of the number of COVID cases and close to double the number of deaths. So, it's very unfortunate. As everyone is probably well aware, vaccinations are occurring throughout California. Here in the City of Downey, we do actually have a mega-vaccination site at Los Angeles County's Office of Education. This started back on the 19th. It is open seven days a week, and we are tentatively, it will be open through mid-February. Here's the location. If you want to know and get more information about vaccination, please visit vaccinateLacounty.com. I know the goal for this particular site is expected to be at 4,000, but I know that we are not currently at that just because of the supplies of vaccines. Starting on the 21st of this month, Phase 1B, meaning those who are 65 years and over, are eligible for vaccinations. What has the city been doing? Just quick updates again. Our Emergency Operations Center continues to stay activated. We are at our lowest level, meaning we continue to monitor staffers, monitoring the situation. We are always working on cost recovery, making sure that we can recoup all the expenses as much as we can. Recently, again, we had completed our CARES Act report. The city also has been helping to support both city departments and partner agencies with personal protective supplies, such as hand sanitizations and some masks that was made available through the county, and we've been sharing that with our Los Angeles County Office of Education, Downey Adult School, Metro. So, these are some of the partner agencies that we've shared some of our resources with. We just recently completed a food drive. This will be the third food drive since the pandemic here in the City of Downey. And we served at 2,141 households. Some photos we see there. We see our mayor helping to load up some of the cars. We also have our Community Emergency Response Team volunteer members assisting at our food drive. This is a volunteer group that's assisted in all of the food drives thus far. Other efforts with our city departments. So, our city manager's office continues to update our websites. They update this on the evenings, on the weekends. Just know that you can visit our website and get up-to-date information. Social media postings, as you can see, since November, we've had 485, reaching well over half a million people. Hotline calls since November, we saw 403 calls. Since the pandemic, we responded to 3,085 calls. This is a quick graph, pie graph of our CARES Act. So, the CARES money helped us in many ways. Some of the things included administrative expenses here in the city, but also assisting with business assistant programs that is offered to our local businesses, food programs, such as our senior programs, housing support, meaning rental support for those who are struggling through COVID, and also assisting to make sure that we have telework capabilities so our staff can work from home, but also provide city services, no matter whatever the restrictions are. So, those are some of the expenses, and we were very fortunate to get the CARES Act money for that. Other things that city manager's office has been involved with, they've helped to coordinate candy cane, lane drive-through events, the city's first holiday caravan event, and recently mentioned the food drive. The police department continues to remain active. They continuously respond to calls related to the health order. They also help to educate residents and local business regarding the ever-changing county health orders. They help to respond and coordinate with parks and recreation to help patrol their city parks when needed. And they do assist our homeless population to get assistance and resources to them to help mitigate COVID-19. And they also provide personal protective equipment and supplies to their personnel and get vaccinations for their personnel as well. Fire's response. Fire is seeing the call volume definitely has increased with an average of 29% increase through this time. We have seen a dramatic increase in COVID-19 cases. In December, it was 47. It has rose to 74 in the week of January 10. And this is consistent throughout the county. Downey Fire continued to participate in the annual Operation Santa Toy Drive. And this year, though, it was a drive-through. Other things that we have seen differently, and I'll just quickly go through. These are some policy or plans of the county that has impacted fire department's operations. One is search assistant plan, meaning that there is a policy now where area hospitals can utilize fire department personnel to assist with the management of ambulance-receiving areas. Thus far, City of Downey's Fire Department has not received any requests for that support. Another one is that the California Office of Emergency Services has stepped in to assist with the local hospitals experiencing staffing shortages due to the pandemic. So, they are asking for volunteer requests. I'm sorry. Out-of-state county hospitals can ask for support. Thus far, City of Downey Fire Department has not committed any resources outside of the county. Parks and Recreation is always busy. Since November, they've provided 12,568 senior grab-and-go meals, conducted 3,795 wellness checks, and have delivered 850 home meals. They continue to do various virtual recreation programs. Here's the photos of some of those, and obviously, a bunch more, especially in the holiday season. Community development. Here's just some numbers that we see in terms of the types of programs that we've kind of mentioned. Outdoor dining permits. We've seen 34 issued to pending temporary outdoor businesses. There are 10 operations permit that has been issued. In terms of residential rental assistance programs, we have distributed 878 applications, distributed 154 checks, and we processed 47 applications. Citywide business grants, which are $25,000 each. 32 businesses received those applications. 14 businesses are actually pending final reimbursement approval, and 50 are on the waiting list. In terms of our downtown restaurant parklet grants, which are $10,000 each, there has been six businesses who have received that grant. In terms of our city clerk, as you know, one of the things that we are trying to do to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 is we have went back to virtual city council meetings since November 24. Thank you to those who are joining us today virtually right now. Our finance department continues to track and document expenses, and our staff continues to adhere to social distancing protocols. Human resources, some of the things that has changed for us as well here in the city for city staff. Human resources, some of the things that has changed for us as well here in city for city staff. Um our HR department has actually developed our COVID prevention program to address COVID-related employee health and safety. Again, we do value uh all the staff who've continued to work during COVID times. So we want to make sure they stay safe. I know a lot's been going on. So again, if you ever have questions about what is the health order now, please visit our website, go to the city's website and you will see COVID-19 updates. Um if you'd like to actually talk to someone in live person, please feel free to call us at five six two two nine nine six seven one one. We actually have two staff who manage this line. They speak both English and Spanish. We invite you, whatever questions related to COVID. Um don't hesitate to call that number. And we also have our number there for our senior wellness check program. And if you ever have questions about county resources, there's also two one one and obviously LA County's Department of Public Health website as well. You can follow us on Twitter, Facebook, and Instagram. Thank you so much. And that concludes my presentation. Does anyone have questions?
No questions, just a really great presentation. Thank you, Rakdi. Thank you for, for putting it all together and keeping us and our community informed with everything that has been we've been doing and uh to respond to the COVID uh pandemic. And so thank you. I appreciate this, this presentation.
Thank you.
Well, now that we've got, we've uh finished our presentations, I would like to move on with city council member announcements, requests for future agenda items, conference meeting reports, et cetera, and I will begin with uh Madam Mayor Protem to my right.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to start off by just welcoming, welcoming everyone who is watching us here virtually this evening. I know we had some minor glitches with our YouTube. So I hope uh you're able to participate and watch us uh via Zoom. Uh there's not many events uh I have been attended, uh but I did want to mention that I had the opportunity of going to our drive-through food distribution with our mayor. Uh and I want to mention that over two thousand families receive food and other essential items. So I want to thank our supervisor Janice Hahn, Los Angeles Regional Food Bank and LA County Library for the partnership and this great opportunity to serve so many of our residents who are in need right now. And, and not to get into too much into politics, but I did want to mention that I watched the inauguration of our president, uh Joe Biden. I mentioned this only because of his message of uh unity and civility. And I think if, if anything, what twenty twenty has taught us is that uh one, we need to be uh kind uh to each other. Life is short. Uh we need to respect each other. Uh and we need to make sure that we tell our loved ones how much, how much we appreciate them and how much we care about them. Uh but that's just one um takeaway that I received from twenty twenty. And I'm very hopeful about twenty twenty-one, especially like Rakdi uh mentioned uh our vaccines are being provided and they are be, being provided to our most vulnerable members of the community. Those who are sixty-five and over. I know it's been hard and difficult to uh get appointments to get our loved ones vaccinated because either uh there's not enough appointments due to uh lack of vaccines or just the website uh we've experienced problems, but I know the county is working on those issues. And uh they are looking into a new registration uh option, which should be opening fairly soon. So I just want to ask everyone to please be patient. And again, um I know twenty twenty-one, I feel it, it's going to be a better year. So I just ask that everyone be patient. And uh like I've said before, please be civil with each other. And I did want to mention an upcoming event, which our mayor will be participating in. Uh this is a virtual event this Saturday, January thirtieth. It's, it's a human trafficking virtual event. Fight against human trafficking. Uh it's from twelve PM to one thirty PM. It is a free event, but donations are also appreciated. And you can find more information on my Facebook page along with our mayor's Facebook page. I know she'll be talking more about it, uh but I did want to mention that our mayor will be one of the guest speakers at this event. So please join us and learn more about human trafficking uh and see how you can help. And that concludes my comments. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I would like to uh call on council member uh Alvarez if you have any comments for the meeting.
Yes, um thank you, Madam Mayor. Um good evening, um Madam Mayor, council members, Gilbert, staff, and community members. Um let me turn my camera on, sorry. Okay. Um I will keep my comments brief. I have, I have met with many community members in recent weeks and the stories are all very similar. The last few months have been very challenging for our community. Countless families have been impacted uh by an unprecedented public health crisis. People are hurting and so many levels. We in the government have provided a response, but we must recognize that we have done uh a lot, but it's, it's not enough. So um we need to establish more protections for working families, for essential workers, for seniors, for veterans, for childrens, uh for down house, for our most vulnerable communities. Over the next few months, many he, here in Downey will receive a vaccine. But that, that vaccine will not fix the years of economic inequality and systematic disadvantage that we have seen in our community. I thank all the community members here in Downey who have come forward before this council to each of us to express your, your hurt. When you say that you need rent relief, we hear you. And, and I think we do. Um when you say you need higher minimum wage, when we, we, we do hear you and I believe uh that as well. And when we need a, when they said that they need reform and accountability, we hear them. So I suggest to please keep calling, contacting us. Uh your voice matters and the council is here to listen and to change the direction of our city so that we can meet the needs of all the constituents. Uh with that in mind, I would like to disguise, discuss an item. Even before the pandemic, high percentage and on the house owners of Downey families rent their home and many are struggling with paying their mortgage. And I believe we must study the topic and hear from the experts uh of the public in regards to housing affordable. And I request Gilbert, city manager, and Ms. Mayor Claudia Fometta, uh Mayor um that if we can schedule a presentation with experts on housing protections. And so that way we can speak about it and we can listen uh uh about it as well. And would you like me to also make be my request and write any requests to this, Ms. Mayor?
Um Councilmember Alvarez, I don't believe you, you have to submit your request in writing. Um would you elaborate uh a little bit further in terms of what type of presentation you are asking uh staff to, to do?
Yes, um basically more protections for uh the renters and that it's more likely to have rent control in the city.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarez. Um city manager, leave us with you.
Um sure, um Councilmember Alvarez, um Madam Mayor. So what we can do is from, from staff perspective is um as I hear the, the request is to have an item on the agenda for discussion. So um I know that they would like, um Councilmember Alvarez would like to have some, some experts, but certainly what needs to happen is um we will put this on the next agenda for the council to consider and then you will vote on um on that particular item and to give staff direction as to whether or not to move forward with any particular um alternatives that may be that may come out of that discussion. So what we could do is have a um agenda item for next council meeting for you all to consider, uh Councilmember Alvarez's request.
And just for clarification, what is her request?
Um it's a discussion item for uh rent control. Is that um the request, um Councilmember Alvarez?
That is correct.
I, I don't see a, I don't see a problem with that, Councilmember Alvarez. Um that can be placed on the agenda for next uh council meeting so we can discuss further.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor.
Will that conclude your comments?
Yes, that concludes my comments. I'm sorry.
Thank you. That's okay. Uh we're glad you're feeling better, by the way.
Thank you so much.
Uh Councilmember Trujillo?
Hi, good evening. Um first and foremost, I want to echo some of the sentiment expressed by my colleague, Councilmember Alvarez. The number one priority, I believe, for us, as the city government, is to make sure our residents are protected. And during these uh difficult times, we want to make sure that families have food on the table and shelter. So there's any residents out there that are in need, uh please come to us, come to City Hall, leave me a message. Um we'll call you back and try to get you to the right resources. Um that's what we're here for. We're here to serve. So first and foremost, uh please feel free to come to City Hall, leave me a message, anyone of us a message and we'll get back to you. And the next thing, I just wanted to uh assure the residents that um I've received complaints, numerous complaints about um illegal racing safety issue. It's a big safety issue for our families and our kids. If we hear about cars racing in our neighborhoods. Um I know they've taken to the mall in particular, but I can assure the residents that our police are on it. They're responding. They've heard of the complaints. It has not gone unnoticed. We are responding and taking appropriate action. Again, feel free to continue to reach out to me as well as any other council members with any concerns you can have on any issue, but especially when it comes to public safety. So uh thank you uh to our police department for responding to the resident complaints on this issue. And with that, that is all. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Trujillo. Nice to see you. Uh Councilmember Ashton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Uh just really briefly, uh for, this is an item for staff. Uh on Paramount Boulevard, I know Edison was doing some work right in front of their substation just south of uh Firestone. And it seems like they've completed their work, but the, the, the condition of the, the pavement there is really not what I would expect this. Especially considering we had just repaved the entire area. So, so it was really uh in good shape. And then they kind of left it in a way where um you know, it almost feels like it, there's like little mini speed bumps where, where they uh did their digging at. So if we could get back with, with Edison and have them do a better job of uh fixing tho- those sections that they dug up on Paramount just south of uh Firestone in front of their uh substation, that would be greatly appreciated. With that, it's good to see everyone and uh I, I also, I agree with uh my two uh previous colleagues, uh Councilmembers Trio and Alvarez. We do need to do what we can to, to protect our residents and any information on options of what we can do to, to better provide uh uh if anything, a safety net for those uh residents that are really being affected by this COVID uh pandemic would be greatly appreciated. With that, that concludes my comments. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Ashton, and a thank you to everybody. Uh certainly, we understand and, and we know that this pandemic has caused great financial harm to communities across the globe uh across the country. And certainly, uh our city is not immune to that. Um we will continue to look at ways to um to respond uh effectively and efficiently to the needs of our communities. Uh understanding that um financially, uh our local governments only have um a certain amount to, to respond to services. Um and so it's a very delicate balance, but um I, I also agree with the rest of the council members. Um our job is to provide um additional guidance and seek uh resources so that our communities can be protected and can um be helped during these very difficult times. Um speaking of a couple of areas that have been of concern and to those of you that are continuing to listen, um I, I want to tell you that we are listening to our residents. Um there's been a lot of complaints regarding the racing and the, and the speeding uh around various segments of our city. I want to especially uh give thanks to uh Chief Dean Milligan um and your staff for uh the job that you're doing, Chief. Um there's, there were several complaints about uh racing and, and individuals doing donuts behind Stonewood Mall um during the evening hours or the late night hours. And I do want to also thank um the Director of Community Development, Aldo, Aldo Schindler for reaching out to Stonewood Management. Um they will be uh more vigilant and, and they will have additional security in that uh area. And uh Chief uh Milligan provided um some additional information to me that I wanted to share with our community. And that is uh last weekend, uh there was uh a couple of teams uh of officers that conducted um speed enforcement uh in particularly race, in particular uh racing, correct, Chief? And uh you indicated uh they were over
Not specifically racing, but we were, we were addressing traffic issues concerning car clubs who often end up being involved in these races. So while we didn't interrupt any actual racing, we were addressing car clubs whose tendencies generally, generally are to gather and then do donuts and to speed when they're leaving a, a location or whatever else, creating a lot of the problems that we've been experiencing in the Stonewood Mall and other areas.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Um and, and you indicated uh over forty citations were given um between Thursday and Saturday. And so that again, um sends, continues to send a clear message to our community that we, uh our, our police department is out there. Uh our officers will continue to remain vigilant. Um I would like to ask um if we can uh look at uh speed enforcement uh along Downey Avenue. I've received several complaints from our residents. Uh Downey Avenue specifically between Stewart and Gray and Gardendale. Also, the other segment uh on Downey Avenue between Florence and Gallatin. Uh one more is uh Stewart and Gray between Reeves and Old River School Road. I think that uh the residents have mentioned those can be uh little hotspots. And as Madam Mayor Protem indicated, uh we did attend the food distribution site and we are very grateful for Supervisor Janice Hahn uh in uh her partnership. Those twenty, over twenty-one hundred families that uh received meal distributions. Uh that was, again, we realize that may be a drop in the bucket, um but it is my goal as mayor to have uh a food distribution on a quarterly basis. Uh we are partnering next with Assemblywoman Christina Garcia and uh we will continue to partner with, of course, the LA Regional Food Bank. Uh we realize how uh what a difficult time this is for many families, that one in four uh individuals are experiencing hunger uh in two out of five children um as well. And um I also want to let our community know, um we are very proud to be able to be uh to have been chosen by Supervisor Janice Hahn. She has a restaurant voucher program and it is a twenty-five thousand dollar grant um that uh she, that she had uh in, in Pick Downey. And we in turn picked uh one of our uh mem, one of our organizations, nonprofit organizations that benefits uh our most vulnerable uh Downey families. And this is the TLC, the True Lasting Connections Program through Downey Unified. So what we've done is uh purchased twenty-five thousand dollars worth of gift cards uh benefiting small family-owned restaurants in our city that have been uh impacted by COVID. And uh then those gift cards in turn have been handed over to TLC. Uh and then TLC has selected uh many families within that program. And again, it's benefiting our, our small uh family-owned restaurants and it's also benefiting um our families uh that have been impacted um in Downey Unified School District as well. So we are very grateful for those partnerships. Uh with that, everybody, that will conclude my comments and my asks. Thank you. Now is the time for non-agenda public comment. Before we begin the non-agenda public comment period, I would like to remind members of the public participating telephonically that the city meeting rules contained in the Downey Municipal Code prohibit any conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting, even if you're participating telephonically. Each speaker shall have three minutes to address the council on issues that are within the city's jurisdiction. Since we are under a federal, state, and local emergency declaration, and Los Angeles County's safer at work, and in the community's order, I will limit this non-agenda public comment period to 30 minutes, pursuant to Downey Municipal Code, Section 2105G. Members of the public who wish to address the city council regarding non-agenda items may now call our teleconference phone line at 562-299-6622. For those who submitted comments via email, your comments will be read into the record, and no further public comment via teleconference will be permitted. City Clerk Duarte, did we receive any written correspondence on non-agenda items to be read into the record?
Yes, Mayor, we have two emails. The first email is from Etna Mendosa. And she would like to congratulate the new council members. We also received a letter from Lee Squire. Lee Squire, Vietnam-era veteran, civil rights advocate. "Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Subject: Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Day and Messenger of Equality and Opportunity. His message of the civil rights movement was to be nonviolent, changed by peaceful protest and civil disobedience. I consider Dr. Luther King Jr. as the father of the civil rights movement, the Mahatma Gandhi of America for Civil Rights, a black rabbi of peace. Millions of people have benefited from the civil rights since his death in April 1968. He spoke of not judging a person by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. I ask, in closing, for everyone to read his message of hope in speech, 'I have a dream.' Thank you."
Thank you. Do we have speakers on the phone?
Yes, Mayor, we do. Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Yes, this is the famous Goat Puppet, food critic, and Downey critic. So do I. Three minutes.
Sir, your time is running.
Okay. Well, first of all, I'm logged on to your Zoom right now. I tried your YouTube channel, and apparently you blocked the audio. So nobody can hear. I can see the nice, pretty people on the screen, with the exception of that ugly Ron Ash. But I can't hear your voices on YouTube. Goat Puppet went to the agenda box. Goat Puppet hung up. He raised my virtual hook tonight. Since I'm a goat, I don't have a hand, I have a hook. So you've been running your Zooms for months and months without the ability to participate in violation of 54950 of the Brown Act. I've even left messages at the law office of a certain councilwoman. She's my mom's daughter. And I attempted, or my friend Mr. Schindler attempted, to meet and confirm the matter. However, given the fact that you want to be like Mitchell Englander on Monday, who's got 14 months in federal prison, there are certain things similar to that.
Sir, we can't hear you. We're going to disconnect the line, we can't hear you.
You can hear me. I'm here. So you see, I have to do that. Like back in the days when I was operating my special radio channel, Goat Puppet Radio. Okay. So you try everything in the world so the public can't hear you and participate. But Goat Puppet can defeat any barrier to the First Amendment you so choose. And Goat Puppet is preparing his law for the people of the United States of America versus Baca Pacheco and the city of Downey. Right? No.
Sir, your three minutes are up. Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Yes, good evening, my name is David Gonzalez. And first of all, greetings to Mayor Flomete, Mayor Protem Pacheco, and the rest of the city council this evening. I just wanted to take a moment to congratulate your friend Hector Sosa on receiving that distinction this evening from Mayor Flomete, Mayor's Choice Award. Great job, Hector. Keep up the great work. Your work with the local youth is definitely invaluable and appreciated here in the community. And now your recent role with the Gangs at the Downey. I know you're going to continue to be a champion for our community and lead by example here with pride. So congratulations, Hector. Keep up the great work. I look forward to, again, the work that's to come with Gangs at the Downey and all the ideas that you've shared already, that I know you're putting together and then going to see to fruition this year. So count on my support. Thank you, Flomete, for recognizing Hector. Just one of the many proud and vested members in our community, and such a worthy recognition this evening. So congratulations, Hector, and keep up the great work.
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Good evening, my name is VJ Patel. Good evening, Mayor Flomete and council members and city staff. I want to begin with thanking all of you for moving us through this crazy pandemic. I don't think it said enough, and it's unfortunate that our council meetings have turned into a zoo, but it is what it is. I'm not the smartest person in the room, but I'm confused when Councilmember Alvarez brings up rent forgiveness or rent control. That might be an issue that's better suited for Sacramento or DC. Not necessarily Downey, but I could be wrong. So I just want to urge the council members when they sit down and think about any type of rent forgiveness issue, to really sit down and consider all aspects, all people involved. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and begin speaking.
Good evening, you fat cunts. Why no closed captioning? Officials during the public comment period of city council meetings, they're asking for lawsuit violating the Ralph and Brown Act of Open Meeting Laws. Fat cunts. This is called City's Retaliation Plan, right, Flomete? Fat Flomete, are you listening to me? Your fat white dress and those short little brown boots. Those boots weren't made for walking, bitches, they're made for talking. Forty-two years old, nineteen eighty-three. So people need to call 310-776565. Report why the city of Downey agreement with developers is okay to steal and build around people who are living in poverty and can't pay the rent, like one of the items, like on item seven of the agenda, you fat cunts. Critical comments are important. Critical comments are important. Are you listening, you fat bitches? What? Closed captioning's important. How far is a nigger going to run? This is what we're going to do to the dirty nigger. Send Flomete, send the Jews, send everyone who's working under the table with you. Let's give them back to the dark god and to save America. Did you not hear that Biden got tossed off of his immigration plan by a judge recently? Let's go back to the Constitution of Betterment. We intend to do our part. Freedom. Freedom, you fat niggers. We will have to fight for every inch from now on. Public issues should be uninhibited, robust, and wide open. And include vehement, horrific, and sometimes very, very, very unpleasant sharp attacks on bad fucking government, like what we had with Mitchell Englander and his 14 months in Long Park Jail and fines, you stupid cunts. The political arena is often abusive. And criticism is a part of the abuse. Don't forget, call Homeland Security, 212-330-9803. In addition to that, what? See, they're trying to hear me live on stream, YouTube dumb cunts. Damn, don't you people get anything right with your texts?
Your time is up. Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Hi, my name is Carlos Rendabar. I've had a couple of comments and questions. I was calling in support of the renters in the Newville Street area with regard to measures that are being proposed for permitted parking. One of the renters from last week mentioned her views, and she advocated for her family and her fellow tenants. But there are now also reports of harassment upon the renters of throwing eggs and other types of assault. So I wanted to bring that to attention of the city and possibly check that out. I'm also calling in support of other renters and other measures to support them in dealing with this pandemic, including rent control. I also wanted to see city staff inform us about city's involvement in possibly extending the vaccine sites at Laco beyond mid-February, if that is fully upon the LA County Public Health. The last thing I wanted to bring about, or at least possibly get a response from city staff, is to share my concern about Councilman Trujillo's investigation with his work with the DA's office, and if the city staff is keeping abreast of any developments in that case. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and begin speaking.
Jorge. Buenas tardes, concejales. Este, mi nombre es Jorge.
Señor, permítame un momentito. Le voy a tener que traducir, entonces si puede decir unas palabras y luego me da oportunidad de traducir lo que dice, eh?
Sí, claro.
Puede empezar.
Sí, este, buenas tardes, mi nombre es Jorge. Yo soy miembro de la Unión de Vecinos en la ciudad de Downey. Hace unos meses, en el verano, este, uno de mis vecinos falleció por el estrés que tenía sobre la pandemia.
Okay, permítame un momentito. My name is Jorge, and I am a member of the Tenants Association in Downey. A few months ago, a neighbor passed away due to stress related to rent issues. Okay, puede seguir?
Sí, este, él falleció porque tenía estrés y por la pandemia no podía encontrar trabajo. Este, a mí me duele que las comunidades estén sufriendo y el concesgo municipal no está haciendo nada.
Okay, permítame. He passed away because he had stress and was having a hard time finding a job due to COVID. It hurts me to see that people are suffering and the city council is not doing anything. Okay, proceda.
Sí, este, yo por lo que miro las noticias, el Condado de Los Ángeles dio dinero a la ciudad de Downey. Pero la ciudad de Downey, ¿qué dinero ha puesto para ayudar a las familias?
Okay, permítame. What I have seen in the news is that LA County has given the city of Downey money, but what has Downey done with that money to help families? Puede proceder.
Sí, la ciudad de Downey no ha puesto dinero para las rentas, solo el condado. Estoy pidiéndoles a los concejales que pongan un control de rentas.
Okay, Downey has not given any money, not only the county, and I am now requesting that the city of Downey establish rent control.
Que pongan, este, un moratorio para ayudar a los inquilinos, a los dueños de propiedad, a los negocios, que son negocios chicos, no son empresas grandes. Los tenemos que apoyar.
Okay, I ask the city of Downey to help residential tenants, property owners, and small business owners at this time.
Sí, y quiero decirles a los cónsules que aprueben más viviendas que la gente pueda pagar, porque no podemos pagar, estamos batallando.
I ask the city council to approve more low-income housing because we are having a hard time paying rent.
Yo soy un trucker para Amazon y pago mucha renta, pero no puedo ir a mi casa y disfrutar a mi apartamento. Estoy pagando mucha renta. Las rentas están exageradas, los sueldos no alcanzan.
I am an Amazon truck driver, and my rent is too high. I cannot enjoy coming back home to my apartment because the rents are too high and we cannot afford it.
De qué sirve estar pagando tres mil dólares en renta, veinticinco mil al mes si no estamos, y los apartamentos a veces no le dan el mantenimiento. Eso no es justo.
What's the point of paying $3,000, $25,000 in rent if the apartments are not even maintained? That is not fair.
Sí, les pido también que pongan más dinero a la comunidad y apoyen a las familias. Hay personas que solamente son solas o tienen tres niños, y se les es difícil pagar la renta.
I ask that you give more money to the community. Sometimes families have three members in the family and cannot pay their rent.
Sí, y a los niños chiquitos, este, y a las ancianos. Que les den apoyo a los ancianos. Es todo.
Okay, gracias. I ask that you lend some support to families with small children and seniors. That is all. Thank you. Muchas gracias.
Gracias.
Please state your name and begin speaking.
Merly Alvisures.
I'm sorry?
Merly Alvisures.
Okay, go ahead.
Buenas noches, concejales de la ciudad de Alvisures. Soy un miembro de la comunidad y es muy importante que la ciudad tenga el control de renta, ya que hay muchas personas de la tercera edad que cuentan con deshabilidades y que no pueden pagar una renta muy alta. Es importante que...
Permítame un momentito para traducir lo que dijo. Su nombre es Merly, ¿cuál es el apellido?
Alvisures.
Merly Alvisures. I am calling in regards to asking the city of Downey to establish rental assistance for seniors in the community. Proceda.
Porque hay muchas personas de la tercera edad que no pueden pagar una renta alta.
Because there are many members of the community that are seniors and cannot afford to pay a high rent?
Y hay personas que tienen deshabilitas, madres que son solteras con hijos y que trabajan muy duramente.
There are also members of the community with disabilities and single mothers that work very hard?
Que pagan sus taxes y que apoyan a los concejales, como en este caso a ustedes, los concejales de la ciudad de Downey, que recuerden que primero está el pueblo y después ustedes.
These are community members that pay taxes and support the council members, and I want to remind you that the community is first and you are second.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much. Gracias. We have four more calls here. Please state your name and begin speaking.
My name is Brian Hayman. I'm a resident of the city. First of all, I'd like to thank Mayor Frometta for her column that appeared in the Downey Patriot wherein she lays out all of the issues in the city that she would like staff to address, especially dealing with quality of life, such as responding to requests for removal of abandoned furniture and that kind of thing. It doesn't seem like it's very important, but all of these issues that the mayor addressed are really important to the quality of life in our city. And I'm glad to see that she is addressing those issues. It's easy to overlook them, but we all live in the city of Downey because it's such a well-maintained city, but we need to all remain vigilant to keep it that way. And also, I'd like to echo some of the comments of the previous callers about frustration with using YouTube for the livestream broadcast of the city council meetings. It just doesn't seem to be working very well. And even Zoom tonight didn't work well, didn't have any audio connection on it. And residents aren't going to be able to attend the city council meetings live anymore because of the COVID-19 shutdowns. I think the city staff really need to step up and do a better job of producing digitally the city council meetings. If staff isn't able to do it on their own or doesn't have the right equipment to do it, perhaps a contractor should be brought in. Other units of government run their meetings on Zoom and do it very efficiently, can they Los Angeles, et cetera. If we're not going to be allowed to attend meetings in person, the city really has to do a much better job of putting the meetings on digitally. The last item I'd like to suggest is that perhaps during the summer, when the weather improves and we've come out of this COVID-19 shutdown, we establish one night a month where residents can walk the Rio Honda Golf Course. That's a wonderful facility that only the golfers right now get to enjoy. And I think it could be done late afternoon or early evening where citizens can walk the links and the first inaugural event could be walk the links at Rio Honda with the mayor. Be a good chance to get citizens out to see our golf course without having to drive a golf cart or actually play the links. So it's a resource that's really only utilized by golfers. In actuality, it's a park and it's the largest park in the city, yet very few people get to the Rio Honda Golf Course.
Thank you, your three minutes are up. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Please state your name and begin speaking.
Hello, sí, buenas noches.
Sí, buenas noches. Le voy a traducir. Proceda, por favor.
Okay, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Barbara Rodríguez y llevo diez años viviendo en Downey.
Good evening, my name is Barbaro Rodríguez and I have been a resident of Downey for ten years.
Yo estoy hablando para el problema, ¿por qué no ponen en la agenda el control de renta?
I am calling to ask why you don't place the rent control on the agenda?
Porque ahí parece que no estamos enfocando en otros problemas que no están ayudando a la comunidad como es el control de renta.
Because we sometimes focus on other issues that are not helping the community and not on rent control.
Y también estamos, la ciudad supuestamente no tiene dinero para una cosa, pero para otras cosas sí tiene dinero.
And the city says that they don't have money for certain things, but then for other things they do have money.
Como una de las cosas es que el administrador de la ciudad de Downey... Hello?
One of the things is that the city of Downey administrator?
Gana más que un senador de los Estados Unidos. Gana más de trescientos mil dólares al año.
Earns more, the city administrator earns more than a US senator? He makes more than three hundred thousand dollars a year.
Y hay personas aquí en esta ciudad que están pasando trabajo que no han podido pagar la renta y la ciudad no los ha ayudado.
And there are people here in the community that don't have a job and haven't been able to pay the rent and the city is not helping.
Yo quisiera que ustedes me dieran una explicación por qué ustedes no han ayudado a las personas que están necesitando renta.
I want you to give me an explanation of why you have not helped those community members in need.
Y están siempre poniendo el pretexto que no hay dinero y si hay dinero...
And you use the excuse that there is no money when there is money.
Okay, esto, buenas noches.
That is all, have a good evening. Gracias. Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Hello, this is Rodolfo from the Downey Tenants Union, I'm a member. So I just want to thank the council for considering all this rent control. I think it's very important that tenants have more protections and, you know, surrounding cities have done it. So of course we can do it in Downey as well, you know, Baldwin Park recently did it, of course Los Angeles has had it for a long time, Long Beach, et cetera. So it's going to be wonderful for the council to help the residents, the tenants, current and future in this way. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, that is all.
Thank you. Very quickly, I do want to apologize to those of you that are watching us via Zoom. There were a couple of callers that said a number of obscenities and again, due to First Amendment, unfortunately, we cannot control the language that individuals choose to address this council. This is not the type of dialogue that we like to have with residents and community members. And again, we apologize if some of those callers were perhaps offensive to some of the individuals watching. I know it was offensive to me. Also, I do want to very quickly address, I know there were some of the callers that indicated the community has not done anything to address the housing needs. And I do want to remind our community members that through COVID-19 monies and the CARES Act, our city, the city of Downey, was able to distribute over seven hundred thousand dollars in 2020 in rental assistance. Now is the time for consent calendar items. Members of the public wishing to address the city council regarding consent calendar items may now call our teleconference line at five, six, two, two, nine, nine, six, six, two, two. For those who submitted comments via email, your comments will be read into the record and no further public comment via teleconference will be permitted. City Clerk Duarte, did we receive any written correspondence to be read into the record regarding consent items?
Yes, Mayor, we did. The first one is an email from Priscilla Oropeza. Hello, I am a Downey resident and tenant. The extension of the eviction moratorium for commercial renters and not residential renters, many of whom are facing and did face eviction during this pandemic, is unlawful, unethical and completely classist. I, along with my family who rent in our city, ask for greater tenant protection regardless or not this selective extension passes. Thank you, Priscilla. And next we have, of course...
Yes, and City Clerk, I had asked our city attorney to address that specific line item, and that was one of the reasons we did not put it in the agenda. Madam City Attorney, would you please speak to that?
Yeah, I'm hearing several comments about why we're doing something for commercial renters and not residential renters. And back in September, I prepared a staff report that gave you a summary of a new law, AB 3088. That's a state law that essentially took over the regulation of evictions, rent increases and the conditions upon which renters could avoid eviction in the future. Basically, the state legislature said it needed uniformity amongst all the cities in the state and they needed to have one standard rule that applied to all residential renters. So they adopted AB 3088 in September of last year and essentially took that authority away from the cities and set a statewide standard that basically sets the standards for residential renters and how they are protected from eviction and how they could avoid eviction in the future. That's why there's no residential moratorium any longer in the city of Downey. We are now subject to AB 3088. And that is why all we have in terms of authority is to regulate and put in a moratorium as it applies to commercial renters. So just in a nutshell, AB 3088 essentially says that for the period of March through August, if a renter gives the landlord a notice that says they are suffering a COVID-related financial burden or hardship and they cannot pay the rent, they must provide something in writing to the landlord. Once they do that, for that period of unpaid rent from March through August, they are protected from eviction. But starting September 1st, the state law says that in order to avoid eviction, starting with the rent in September, moving forward, that renters have to pay at least 25% of the rent due each month plus provide a hardship notification to the landlord. In a nutshell, that is the rules statewide and cities can no longer do their own thing with respect to those standards.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. So we, again, we are no longer, municipalities are no longer able to control the residential moratoriums. We are under the state law and that, if you just indicated, as of September 1st of last year, moving forward, individuals that have been impacted by COVID must pay at least 25% of the rent that is due and provide a COVID-19 type of hardship notification.
Yes.
And now, I know the governor made some announcements as of yesterday and these moratoriums are extended as of the end of June.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
This rule that was adopted back in September is extended through June 30th. There's a little bit of confusion based on what the governor said and what's in a bill, but it looks like June 30th is the extension cutoff date. Having said all of that, the city of Downey has utilized other tools to help renters, a Renters Assistance Program, for instance. Those, and there are other things that we have done, that we have other tools to be able to address the needs of residential renters. But when it comes to these rules about paying rent and eviction, we no longer have, the cities no longer have authority to legislate in this area. The state took over that authority from the cities. So all we're left with is regulate, doing our own local regulations for commercial renters. So that's where we're at.
Thank you, thank you, Madam City Attorney. We will more than likely have to utilize our social media platforms and provide additional information to our community so that there is no ambiguity and there is no confusion in relation to what we at a local level are able to do and where our power ends, so to speak, in the state takes over. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Alvarez.
Can I request for something to you and Madam Mayor and Yvette to update or have a declaration letter in our website so the community can upload it and that will be the hardship declaration letter for the landlords? Because communities sometimes don't have that in handy. So I know there's one specific that it's in general to be given to the landlords. And also, I have heard from the community requesting information about if we still have money to pay or give the assistance to renters.
Councilmember Alvarez, we will definitely take a look at that. We can move forward with the additional callers on the phone, but we will have staff look into those matters. The county has a standard hardship letter that they have put on their website, so we'll do, we can do a link to that form.
So we will do a link to the standard letter that the county already has. In that way, they can have that more readily available.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor.
City Clerk Duarte, do we have any additional correspondence, excuse me, callers?
Yes, Mayor, I actually have one more letter to read and then we have two calls on hold. This letter is from Lee Squire, Vietnam-era veteran, civil rights advocate for disabled children. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Subject: Consent Calendar Number Seven, Extension of Urgency Ordinance Establishing a Temporary Moratorium on Evictions of Commercial Tenants Impacted by COVID-19 Pandemic and Rent Repayment Period. The staff report indicates to extend the above period to March 31st, 2021 pursuant to Governor's executive order. However, staff report indicates that residential tenants expire January 31st, 2021. Is this still the case or is there a longer period? My concern is for residential tenants who are the parents of children with disabilities and the applicable civil rights towards these children with disabilities. What is the current expiration for residential tenants? I would have been nice to have volunteered this in the staff report. Hello, please state your name and begin speaking. Hello, please state your name and begin speaking. No, no one's there. Please state your name and begin speaking.
Yeah. My name is Anna Was. Item number 11. Capitalize. Nigga moron. Nigga. And it niggas impacted by COVID-19 and 1921 pandemic for rent repayment. Downey, California, fucking government food section, 866, no, I made a mistake, dumb bitch, 8634, fucking Downey City Charter section regarding extending niggas early to petitions for non-repayment resolved. And then, the other, the niggas of the county metropolitan in which we all know our nigger transportation 440 measure for mother multi-year nigger regional program. These type of grants are laces in the telegraph traffic. A committee to safety in the telegraph area enhancement projects, as we heard earlier from Mr. Ashton, talking about Vermont and racing cars up and down the fucking new streets. The new Williams become cons. City manager, Mr. Lewis is responsible for the executive agreement, you know, like a white nigger, like Englander, asking for the FBI to call him and speak to him regarding the 310-477-6565. And also recommend to the West Street, look into the 213309803 regarding agenda reports on consent items. And they issued awards in my last two seconds, 42 US, 1983. Fuck the police. Don't forget the closed caption. Don't forget the closed caption. Don't forget the closed caption. Quack, 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 quack. Englander, Lampa, 14 months, and a fine, and a fine. Next in line. Who's next in line? Bum, 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 bum. Have I utilized all my time, mommy? I got, I got, I got, I got some more time, mommy? Mommy's a nigger.
Mayor, we have one more call. Please state your name and begin speaking.
First, I will hand the call. Yes, good afternoon. Good evening. First, I just want to say I do not understand what the other person said on the line. That was very embarrassing. But my concern to me, the city, this community, I've been here for 20 years, and I'm very worried, because since last year, Pacheco's been stating that there was going to be rent control, and then when the pandemic hit, they didn't do anything about it. Pacheco, you said there was rent control. You said we were handling the situation, and you weren't handling anything until Kathy took over, took over one of their seats. Now you're deciding to make a change. Now you're looking into it, and I think you should be embarrassed by that, because it took one of our own to get to where she's at. And I'm very satisfied, and I'm very happy, and everybody that stands behind us are also very satisfied knowing that there's somebody that's trying to make a change, because you and the city attorney is not making a change. So I don't know what or how, how you guys are going to do this, but you guys need to take care of the situation, because that should be a priority. That should be in first on the list. That shouldn't be left to the side. That's something that you guys are playing the life of, some citizens that are here in Downey. Not only is the residents in Downey, but also people that have families, that have people to care to, people that you guys don't know about, because you guys don't knock at the doors and ask if they need something from, from the neighbors or anything, because we see all that. We see how they suffer. And there's a lot, elderly people that need so much support, that right now they're fighting their life in the hospital. And probably you don't know that, Pacheco, and whoever's sitting there in that chair making a smirk, because it's not funny. This is not a joke, serious stuff. But that should be first in line. Once you take care of that situation about rent control, and what the city attorney said that she's, they're not in control-
Excuse me, ma'am, we're on consent calendar right now. You need to speak on items related to the consent calendar, not in regards to rent control.
Okay, so, well, aside to that, that needs to be priority, aside to that. Whatever the situation or whatever kind of changes you guys need to make-
Okay, we're going to disconnect the line, because you need to speak regarding consent calendar items at this time.
Okay, sounds good. Have a good night.
Thank you. That is all, Mayor.
Is there a motion? Are there any council members that would like to remove or abstain from an item?
Madam Mayor, I need to abstain from item number four, because my home is within close proximity of this project.
Madam Mayor, I have to abstain from number one, because I was not a city council member by that time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have to abstain from item number one, as I was not a council member on November 24th. So I'll abstain after that part. And I have to abstain from item number seven, as I am partial owner of two parcels of commercial real estate in the downtown Downey section of the city.
Thank you, Councilmember Trujillo.
Madam Mayor, I do need to abstain from item number four, as some of the parts of the project with, are within 1,000 feet of my home, and I'd like to pull item number seven for discussion really quick.
Would you like me to repeat that, Mayor?
Yes, please.
Okay, we have Mayor Protem Pacheco abstaining from item number four, due to the close proximity to her home. Councilmember Ashton also abstaining from item number four, due to the close proximity to his home. Councilmember Trujillo abstaining from item number seven, due to the close proximity to his place of business. Councilmember Trujillo and Alvarez both abstaining from item number one, meeting minutes of November 24, 2020, if they were not seated as council members at that time.
Item, item seven was pulled.
And item seven was pulled by Councilmember Ashton for separate discussion.
Thank you, City Clerk. Is there a motion in a second to approve the consent calendar with item number seven pulled?
I'll make that motion.
So moved.
Okay, Councilmember Ashton?
Mayor, can we take the roll call?
Yes.
Councilmember Alvarez? Councilmember Ashton?
Yes.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pacheco?
Yes.
And Mayor Frometa?
Yes.
Thank you.
Since item number seven was pulled for discussion, the discussion will be had with the council, except for Councilmember Trujillo, who's stated on the record his conflict, so he'll just mute, since he's joining us virtually, he'll just mute, and there'll be the four of you discussing and voting on that item.
Correct. Councilmember Ashton, go ahead, you have the floor, you wanted to pull item number seven, excuse me.
Yeah, just really quick, I like the idea and concept, for the most part, I feel that this is something we do need to do for, for commercial residents as well. The date on there is, that the date that it expires is, I believe, March 31st of 2021. I'd like to see if we can extend that to the same date that the state just did for the residential voters to June 30th, 2021. That would really be my only change.
So the, the March 31st date was taken from the executive order by the governor. The governor gave authority to cities to adopt these kinds of moratoriums for commercial renters, but only extended that authority to March 31st. And that's where I got the March 31st, Councilmember Ashton. It was just to follow the executive order, so that the city doesn't, if we go beyond that, we might become vulnerable for some legal challenge. An argument can be made that we're exceeding our authority under the executive order. So I was just trying to stay within the executive order parameters. I would expect, though, that as we get closer to March 31st, that we'll get another executive order from the governor that might push that March 31st date closer to or by the June 30th date, as you suggested. It's up to you, if you want to change it to June 30th, you can do so, but there is a legal vulnerability there that I'd like to just point out to you.
Thank you, Madam Attorney.
Thank you for bringing that up, then, then, that's the one thing I wasn't quite aware of, but then, what I would ask then, is I'll leave it the same, I'll kind of amend that, but if you can come back to us, as you have in the past, but just continue to, you know, get back to us as far as updates and regarding this as well, as the residential stuff, we would greatly appreciate that. With that, if there's no other discussion, I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, and I'll make that second. Okay, can we get a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Alvarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashton?
Yes.
Councilmember Trujillo? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Abstaining from the item.
Abstaining from the item.
Councilmember abstaining from item number seven. Mayor Protem Pacheco?
Yes.
And Mayor Frometa? The motion was approved with Councilmember Trujillo abstaining from the item.
Okay, thank you. We have some administrative reports. Line, line number nine. Yes, approve the mayor's appointments to the city council standing and ad hoc subcommittees for 2021. The, this item is the annual appointment by the mayor to the city council standing and ad hoc subcommittees for 2021. I have made my selections to the subcommittees and have recommend, and I recommend dissolving certain subcommittees that have completed their tasks and are not needed at this time. We have the Firefighters Memorial Project Subcommittee. As we know that, the Firefighters Memorial was already completed. The Rio Hondo Golf Club Subcommittee also completed their duties, and the 2020 U.S. Census Ad Hoc Subcommittee.
I had, I had a question. In regards to the Rio Hondo Golf Club Subcommittee, is that one needed? Or I still remember that we were going to be meeting last year with, with council member, former council member and former mayor Saab.
It's certainly up to the council if you want to continue it. There are a couple of technical items that were discussed by you and council, former council member Saab, that we are currently working on and looking at. If you want to continue the committee till such time as those items have been completed, you can certainly do that as well.
So if it's okay with Madam Mayor, I would like to see if we can continue that one, only because I remember Councilmember Saab and I, former Councilmember Saab and I, were having some discussions, but unfortunately, we weren't able to meet last year because of COVID.
Okay, now, we didn't have, so, Madam Mayor Protem, then I will have you be, I will have you then lead this subcommittee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so then, the Rio Hondo Golf Club Subcommittee will remain. The other two will be, will be then eliminated as those tasks have been completed.
On the Rio Hondo Subcommittee, you have, who are the two members? We have Councilmember Pacheco and the second?
I would like to ask any of the other council members if they are interested in joining Madam Mayor Protem Pacheco in the Rio Hondo Golf Club Subcommittee.
I'm interested.
Okay, Councilmember Trujillo, then you will be placed in that subcommittee as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. If there's no other changes, we will move forward with that. City Manager, do you have any comments this evening?
Just a couple of-
Sorry, point of order, really quick, we need to vote on that again?
Yes.
We need to take public comment.
We do? Okay.
Yep.
My apologies, we do need to take public comment on this before we finalize with the vote. I will now open this item for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the council regarding item number nine may now call our teleconference line at 562-299-6622. For those who submitted comments via email, your comments will be read into the record and no further public comment via teleconference will be permitted. City Clerk Duarte, did we receive any written correspondence regarding item number nine to be read into the record?
We did not, Mayor.
Yeah, are there any callers?
Yes, we have one call, Mayor. Please state your name and begin speaking.
World famous food critic. And my mommy, Blanca. Yes, though. Item number nine. And again, thank you very much. Giving us, in the animal community, a chance to comment. Let's see here, the Standing Ad Hoc Committee. What are these committees? Why do we need them? When Blanca was mayor, we didn't need any of these. No. She ruled with an iron fist. And that's the way mommy Blanca made things happen. But Mayor Frometa is running things like a senile-
Well, I feel surprised, no.
Oh, yes, yes. But you get the point. You don't. What we need is strong leaders. Like for example, when you're, help the intestinal fortitude. You compliment the inventive, creative First Amendment content of length. Isn't it wonderful that people like Herman-
Can't hear him.
You're trying to say you don't hear me. So I will duplex in the Master Goat Puppet Downey PC Meeting. Yes. Now you can hear me. You can't threaten me. I know how you do things. So, as we're getting into this, despite all your effort to block those with tails and horns, we will continue to call in opine. And once my attorney is out of his disbarment proceeding, initiate litigation to enforce the Brown Act. There actually is, that he's an aminal institution. But again, we will always be here. Put mommy Blanca Pacheco back in as mayor. She is the only one with the guts, the integrity, and the overall integrity to deal with the city. This city is fucked up, worse than Los Angeles, worse than Boston, worse than New York. That's because you have to lead or lead from behind. You're relying on Janice Hahn. Janice Hahn doesn't know what she's doing. Janice Hahn is amazing.
Time is up, sir, thank you. Please state your name and begin speaking. Please state your name and begin speaking.
Mommy, can you hear me? Close caption and no sound live on YouTube. But we're talking about the indigenous prison report on ad hocs. Love my familiar home, but A D C policy, ad hoc communities. Which sometimes are very unlawful and they're unlawful methods of terrorism against the public only to accomplish political treason for themselves by proprietors of crime and violence is what they act upon. This could be changed if Mr. Leaver, the little short bald guy stood in clear for left mommy would voluntarily assemble the police to hold them accountable. It's only reasonable that such reckless criminals in the ad hoc be silent and allow the politicians to be uninhibited, robust and wide open. Sometimes unpleasant attack on the ad hoc, you know. Ask, ask the mayor, she's as big as ad hocs. But I intend to do all for and not participate to pay. And the ad hocs problems of committee. So we talk about constitutionality when it comes to permissible limits in the ad hoc hall. I'm listening, this, what's on the pro temp lady? She seems to be very charged tonight in her black little vest, evil, woo-hoo, woo-hoo, woo-hoo. I hear a phone ringing, can you hear me? Is your clothes crack, you know? Are we at item number nine, the administrative for ad hoc? Who is from that they're going to pick one of stupid doctors that she had there earlier for a season, family? It makes you wonder how criminals react in the arena when it's often abusive but politically on subject for the first and fourth amendment. Let's advocate more Downey, let's punish those who put us in action.
That is all, mayor.
Thank you. Is there a motion in a second to dissolve the Firefighters Memorial Project Subcommittee in the 2020 U.S. Census Ad Hoc Committee?
And also to approve the appointments?
And we are actually doing two separate motions.
Okay.
I'll make the mo, mo, motion to absolve or dissolve the, the Firefighters Memorial and the Ad Hoc Committee for the census.
And I'll second that motion.
I can do.
Okay, City Clerk Duarte, would you please take role?
Yes, mayor, Councilmember Alvarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashton?
Yeah.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pacheco?
Yes.
And Mayor Frometa?
Yes. Okay, is there a motion in a second to approve the appointments to the city council standing and ad hoc subcommittee assignments for 2021?
I'll make that motion.
Right second.
Second.
City Clerk Duarte, can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Alvarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashton?
Yeah.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pacheco?
Yes.
And Mayor Frometa?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Now, City Manager, do you have any comments?
Madam, Madam Mayor, just a couple of comments. First of all, I wanted to express my gratitude to the staff for their hard work during this COVID pandemic. They've really sort of doubled the efforts in a lot of areas to make sure that the communities, the community gets the services that it certainly deserves. In particular, I want to thank Vanya, Judy and Maria and Vanya in particular for coordinating the food drive that happened last week. So thank you for attending, Madam Mayor, that always means a lot to see our mayor out there working. And I'm sure the people really appreciated that as well. Also to, to react to, you see, coordinates a lot of our emergency preparedness and presented to you all the things, despite what you may have heard tonight, the, the city is doing a lot in terms of its response, whether it's feeding seniors, doing wellness checks for seniors and feeding families. And in addition, providing rental assistance payments to those residents who need them and businesses as well, and will continue to do that. And I say all that in the backdrop, with the backdrop of the budget coming up. We're, this is going to be an exceedingly challenging year given what's happened in, in the economy. And Mr. Gandhi will, will, will lead us, I'm sure, through, through the forest again. And we're, we're looking to get that process kicked off here. Actually, we, we've been discussing that, as you know, the last meeting, you approved the schedule. So we're in the process of, of, of meeting with department heads and getting the appropriate budget set for the council consideration as we move through the budget season. And it will be an interesting time this year. But I will assure you that we will present to you something that I think that we will get us through the other side of this pandemic. So we'll work hard with you to get, to get us there. So thank you very much and I appreciate you giving the staff an opportunity to, to work with you all to make sure that we serve our residents, thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Now we are going to adjourn in memory of the following, and we have a long list tonight. Our communities continue to suffer very much with the loss of many individuals due to COVID. And again, while the state, our governor has moved us to, has lifted the stay-at-home order, we are cognizant that we are still very much impacted. And from a healthcare perspective, that continues to ring very true. And our council meetings will continue to be close to the public because of the safety measures that we need to continue to maintain, to protect our community, but also to protect each other. And again, we will adjourn in memory of the following. Law enforcement personnel who lost their battle with COVID-19. Sergeant Emilia Terry Martinez, LAPD. Lieutenant John Reynolds, Garden Grove Police Department. Corrections Officers Jose Alfredo Diramos, Joey Capes. Daniel Lopez Mendoza III. Sergeant Gilbert Blanco, California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation. Gloria Espinoza, longtime Downey resident. Joey Lizardi, Downey resident. And all the lives that we've lost due to COVID-19. A moment of silence, please.